Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Workshop here at Westside Middle School. We'll begin our meeting tonight with the silent chair. And Commissioner Dan Stone, could you lead us in the pledge?
I'm glad to lead you into the pledge. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone. I'd like to begin this evening by welcoming our first students advisory. As you know, the Board of Education enacted a new policy that we will have student advisors to our Board of Education, and they will be coming to our meetings on a rotating basis. Every school will come per month, and this month is Willby. And we have with us tonight Maha Sethi, and welcome. And if you'd like to just tell us what grade you're in and why you're here, you could take the microphone.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Maha Sethi. I'm in 11th grade. I go to Willby, as she said. And I came to this program, and I'm coming to these meetings because I'd like to learn more about our education system and how it works, and how students and teachers and administrators can work together to create a better environment for our schools.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're so happy to have you here. And we might be getting one other student. She might be late, Sarah Bell-Vilfort, but we'll welcome her if she is able to come. Good evening, Mrs. Burns.
Good evening. Dr. Ruffin, President Brown, Commissioners, welcome to Westside Middle School. We have some Westside staff here in the room, Assistant Principals, Mrs. Casca, Mrs. Krishon, Teaching Staff, Mrs. Ferrucci, and Mrs. Corbo. We have some of our PTA members meeting down the hall in the main office, so they will join us shortly. It's our last meeting of the year planned for this evening, so they will join us shortly with a couple of students that wanted to tell you all about our 2018-2019 highlights, student highlights and activities.
Great.
So I'll begin with our school demographics. Our total enrollment, and it has been around this figure for most of the school year, 1,086 students. 67% of our students are regular education students. We have a large population of special education students. It has now reached 20.3%. Our bilingual students represent 12% of our school population, with an additional 48 students that we service as English, as a second language, in our program as well. 59 students here at Westside require special education and bilingual services. We have a big team of special educators and a bilingual education team, and they have to work collaboratively to service those students that need both of those types of services. 83.8 of our students have good attendance at this point in the school year. Some figures that you'll see later in the PowerPoint are reflective of today, June 6th, and that is reaching 83.8% of students that are not in danger of reaching that 20 absent mark, and we're almost at the end, so that's a good figure for us. 16.2% of the students are chronically absent. That includes a pocket of students that are moderately absent. They're under the 20-day limit. However, they are considered chronically absent, and we work with those students throughout the year. Our ESSA target for this school year was 16.1, so we are right there, reaching that number, and after a lot of very hard work with that group of students. 3.1%, only 3.1% of our students are in the severe chronic absence category, and many of those students are medically fragile or medically involved, and you'll see those figures by grade level later on in the presentation. I wanted to talk for a few minutes about our Compact School Model. It began almost 10 years ago here at Westside Middle School, and we have maintained that model for our staff and our school community. With the family and student, many of those students, I think those students throughout the year. Our ESSA target for this school year was 16.1, so we are right there, reaching that number, and after a lot of very hard work with that group of students, 3.1%. Only 3.1% of our students are in the severe chronic absence category, and many of those students are medically fragile or medically involved, and you'll see those figures by grade level later on in the presentation. I wanted to talk for a few minutes about our Compact School Model. It began almost 10 years ago here at Westside Middle School, and we have maintained that model for our staff and our school community. Compact came to us from the University of Connecticut, NEAG School of Education. We were accepted into that Compact Reform Model with Washington School from Waterbury, and only six other schools in the state of Connecticut. After the five-year collaboration with UConn, we were accepted as one of only four schools with the Family and Community Initiative through UConn, so we were able to work with them an additional two years. We've maintained a lot of the strategies and techniques that we took on as a school under that model. It's a shared commitment by all school partners. It stands for Community, Parents, Administrators, Children, and Teachers. And we have an active PTA here at Westside Middle School, a School Governance Council, and we reach out to community partners to maintain that model of Compact. All of our staff serve on a cadre from the beginning of the school year until the end, working on areas of improvement for the school. So every cadre has a focus, and you'll see that some of the tools that they utilize to reach those goals and implement those strategies are done through a flexible inquiry process, which our staff learned when we were working directly with UConn. So there are a lot of tools that we found extremely useful that we maintain, although the direct relationship with UConn did end many years ago. Our highlights for 2018-19 in the area of curriculum and instruction. The advancements include, in our reading language arts, core academic area. The district adopted a StudySync program, which is a blended learning approach for reading and language arts. We received a lot of training as a staff. I participated in the training, as well as the reading language arts teachers, and we were able to implement that in November of 2018. The blended learning approach allows students to do a lot of online learning with the program, and it allows for a lot of customized learning and pacing for students regardless of the level that they are functioning at with regard to their reading. It is standards-based, so our students are challenged through a lot of close reading activities and other skill lessons that are built into those units. In our math department, we've utilized some eye-ready tools and assessments that are skill and standard-based. Right now, we don't have that available to all of the students in the way of instruction. We have a portion of our student population in grades 6, 7, and 8 that receive instruction along with that eye-ready tool. All of our students do take the assessments, but we're looking to incorporate more students to receive that instruction in addition to our grade-level curriculum. In social studies, we're participating in the District Curriculum Committee work. We have many members from Westside serving on that committee on a continuous basis. They're establishing standard-based units of study and securing materials. We greatly need materials for our students in that area. Since the curriculum shift, we are in need of materials that are appropriate for the units of study and are updated for that curriculum shift. In science, we've implemented the Next Generation Science Standard-Based Lessons at the beginning of this school year, and we've just acquired many of those materials that are aligned with those new units at the grade levels 6, 7, and 8. You can see actively in the classroom how different those lessons are presented and how students are approaching them, and the critical thinking piece that goes along with that in terms of how they attack a problem or begin an experiment and come up with an We have lots of other highlights that we wanted to mention. When we began our work as a Compact School, we initiated a Community Day here at the school in October. We had our 10th Annual Community Day in October 2018. We invite families and students, and we invite community agencies to present to our families all that's out there within the community in terms of recreation and counseling and after-school programs. We had a High School Options Night in November of 2018, presented by our school counselors, where we invite parents here to the school, and we talk with parents and their students and their children about the many high school options that are available. And we start that process in November, and we have now an 8th grade class of about 386 students, all going to different high schools in the area, and some outside the area for our VOAG program. We had a 5th grade orientation night recently, inviting our 5th grade feeder school students and their parents, sponsored by our Westside PTA, who provided dinner to the students and the families. We had our winter and spring concerts, which were very successful this year, a spring art show, and we had a school play, coming back onboard with an annual play. We just had our school play last weekend. Additional programs and activities. We have a select music program here that produces a concert chorus, a concert band, guitar and world drumming ensembles. We have a talented art group, a drama club. We have a 21st Century after-school program that includes Girl Scouts and robotics, and we have our competitive sports teams and unified sports here at the school. We've been working with lots of data this year, directly correlated with our school improvement goals. Our school improvement goals cover reading, math, attendance, and school climate. As I mentioned earlier, the ESSA target for us this year was 16.1 with regard to chronic absence. So on this slide, I have laid out for all of us to see that. When we're looking at straight absences, the top table shows that our chronic absence indicator is 12.7. When students are out of school because of disciplinary infractions and out-of-school suspensions count in that figure, our chronic absence number rises to 16.2. So our staff is looking at that closely, particularly our support staff and our House Principals, to determine how we can address that difference, and that the difference definitely allows us to look at things more closely. Our chronic absence, severe chronic absence category has been reduced over the past three to five years, ending with a 3.1 severe chronic absence number, which we're very proud of. We do a lot of work throughout the year with our moderate chronic absence students, and as you can see by grade level, our 6th grade students have the best attendance, and we work with a pocket of our 8th grade students to improve their attendance and maintain We follow our discipline data very closely. We have a big support staff here. We utilize scientifically research-based interventions with our team, positive behavior supports and interventions. We have a lot of individual counseling and social work services, and the services of our prevention specialist, our truancy specialist, and our behavior technician. So we have many referrals to address behavior, but the chart that I included on this slide is regarding in-school and out-of-school suspensions, and how that measures up to our figures from last school year. We have a team that spent a lot of time with our special education students that have behavioral needs, so we are very pleased to see that number decrease in terms of in-school and out-of-school suspensions. We feel that that's a big jump, a big increase, with our special education students, 18% and 10% difference with in-school suspension. And our out-of-school suspensions, looking that they're increased a little bit, but 8% we look at closely to determine why that slight change occurred. We have an after-school detention program that we use in our progressive discipline, and that program has been very beneficial for our students. We do see a decline in that number, but that's always part of our progressive discipline. So it's a good number to have a decline. It doesn't mean that we're not using it. It means that progressively, we've used other things that are mentioned on the bottom. Referrals to community agencies, restorative practices here at the school with our support staff, and other behavior interventions, and individual behavior plans that we continue to improve with.
Mrs. Burns, just a question. Are those cumulative numbers, or are some of those repeat suspensions, or is that individual?
That's individual numbers. And so we look at the number of students that make up that count, and so we have a lot of repeat offenders that require us to start looking at individual behavior plans and tracking at an individual level rather than a whole school or a whole-class approach to behavior supports.
Okay, thank you.
Our Smarter Balance scores have not improved greatly overall in terms of meeting those numbers for school-wide progress, but we are looking at closely with our staff at each grade level, those students that are meeting their growth targets, and those students that are coming very close to meeting their growth targets. In grade 6, we had 71 students that met their ELA growth target, and 85 students that met their math growth target. And within that number, we had another pocket of students that were within 20 points of their growth target for both of those cohorts of students. We worked with those students before our testing season began and tried to get them to really understand what those numbers meant, where those numbers come from, and how they can reach their target by working on different skill areas that we identified. In grade 7, we had 49 students meet their ELA growth target, and 63 students meet their math growth target. Some of those students, and we presented this with staff and actual students, some of our students met their growth target by 200% in grade 7. And that's powerful when you put that in front of a group of students and explain to them how much growth they made in one school year. The same with our 8th grade students, 62 of them meeting their growth target in ELA, and 73 students meeting their math growth target. In grade 8, we had a big pocket of students that were less than 20 points shy of their growth target. And again, that's a powerful conversation with those 8th graders approaching high school and getting them to understand what that means to have that type of performance on a standardized test. Also powerful for the teachers, because many of the students that come to the table with weak skills in reading or math are some of those students that showed between 200% and 300% growth toward that target, which is an amazing accomplishment in one school year or 10 months for those students. In math, we also use the District Assessment Tasks, the DATs, and that is throughout the school year. That is part of the district assessment process for middle school students. We use a rubric, a four-level rubric engaging student progress. There's a sample question on there. Students are asked to think critically. They have to take apart a word problem. They have to attack it in a way that they have to show how they're finding out what their answer is, and the rubric that we use to measure that includes all of those things, those math practices that have to be seen and demonstrated on the Smarter Balance testing. So overall, our students, 83% of our students, met the goal of moving from one category up to the next category on that rubric for our district assessments, or maintaining the practitioner level of that rubric. Language arts, throughout the year, we're using, we began this late, but we're using the unit assessments, which are standard-based and very similar to the Smarter Balance assessments, through our StudySync reading program now. We were able to do that twice this year because we started late with the program. Once it was obtained by the district, it was after marking period 1 had ended. So we began using the Unit 1 assessment, followed that up later on with Unit 2. So overall, at the grade levels, we see increases in that claim, on that reading claim, in the standards, from 42% to 61% mastery for grade 6. In grade 7, they started out very low, and by the end of their Unit 2 assessment, 57% mastery was obtained over the grade level, and grade 8 making a lot of gains. Our 8th graders really adjusted and adapted to that type of program, a blended learning approach, the StudySync program that we're using. They adapted quickly to it, and within the classrooms, I could see over a short period of time that they were able to read and comprehend the material, pull up critical thinking questions, and utilize the tools, taking information from the text that they read, incorporating it into their answers, and really facilitating what they needed to do to create a response, whether it was an assignment or an assessment in StudySync. And hopefully, our students entering grade 7 and 8 next year already have that experience with StudySync and can really make solid progress because they have been exposed to that blended learning approach already. We are a turnaround school. It's something we're approaching with a little bit of familiarity. We were here, many of us on staff were here as a school in need of improvement when our state was measuring our progress with Connecticut Mastery Testing, and we were looking at annual yearly progress and adequate yearly progress. So we are back to the table as a turnaround school, and I included information about our Compact School Model at the beginning of this presentation because a component of our approach to turnaround will be something that we learned through our Compact Model, and that is about taking stock. So we've done a taking stock process or activity here three times in the past 10 years, in which we identify all of those pockets or components of need for our school, and we create action plans, and we utilize an inquiry process to find out how we set those goals, how we set our action plan, how frequently we measure our progress, and we're ready for that, to implement that again and utilize that process, in addition to having professional development for everyone here, administrators and staff, and approaching that turnaround process. The importance of using data will remain one of our priorities, and we included progress monitoring and programs and strategies on our list of how we are going to approach it because we have some tools that we thought we would utilize and would be very effective for our students, and we've had to take another look at that in terms of how much time it takes to utilize that, and how much testing, and how many assessments we're putting in front of our students. So we want to research that a little bit more. And our Smarter Balance testing season at middle school started in April. Before our April break, we have over 1,000 students, and everybody is tested at the middle school, so the comprehensive middle schools spend a lot of time testing. We just finished about a week ago, so that's a long testing season, so we definitely want to research how to use assessments more efficiently and effectively. We are reconfiguring our teams here at Westside for next school year. We are clustering our grade-level teams together. We want to maximize the services for our students, all of our students. So we want to utilize our teachers to the optimal degree and the optimal amount of time by looking at class sizes, by looking at skill needs, and applying and allocating our staff to a cluster of students that are at the same grade level. Right now, we're spread out in grade levels across three houses, so we will house one grade level in each house. Next year, with a House Principal really focusing on that grade level and how to analyze data on a regular basis for that grade level of students, and approach things with a more focused, laser-like look at those students. We have some photos of our highlights for this year, our spring concert. That's our band performing. Our Community Day chorus, our chorus performed many times this year, including at the Palace Participation at Community Day. Our guitar ensemble during our spring concert. And to get ready for our long testing season this year, some of our teachers had the students do a rally, and we all got together in the cafeteria, the students that participated in that Smarter Balanced Rally, and the students talked about how to best get themselves ready for testing, and some quotes that they shared with their classmates about approaching a testing situation. "The only failure in life is the failure to not try." That's one of our 6th graders. And our students here. We have a couple of students that just wanted to give you their feedback on their year. Two of them are eighth graders, one is a sixth grader, and they are very involved in our school community.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
My name is Angel, and I am an eighth-grade Blue House. And one of my favorite parts about this year was the algebra class, which is kind of like, it's teach, it's like Algebra One, so you would take that next year, usually in ninth grade, but Westside gives you an opportunity to take it this year. So that's, that's cutting off one year of, I mean, it's cutting off one year of high school math. And it really helped me a lot because when we did take S-Back or any math exams, we had the extra background to do it, so we understood it better than some of the kids that didn't take Algebra. And I know that, oh, I love singing, by the way. And I'm, I'm in chorus, I was in chorus all three years of middle school, and our chorus teacher, Mrs. Hagan, who was not here, had a baby.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
A baby yesterday, oh, wow, great.
Well, she was a great teacher because she really taught us the dynamics of music. She taught us basically just background, and I really enjoyed, you know, concert choruses, graduation choruses, and I enjoyed all my years at Westside.
All right. Thank you, Angel.
And I'm sure your teachers enjoyed having you in their class.
Absolutely.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
My name is Jose Barberina. I am an eighth-grade student in the Gold House. I've been here at Westside for all the three years, and I've enjoyed and learned very much throughout my, all my three years, and I've matured. I can say that here, all the teachers don't just teach you, they take the time if they need to, apart from just the teaching, to help you throughout problems, not just in teaching, but in life, you know? Like if, if they have to leave the teaching for a second to tell you or give you some advice, you know, it helps you grow and it helps you, you know, you're like, you make a connection with them, you feel comfortable, and that's very important. I am in the Westside Middle School Chorus and in the Westside Middle School Drama Club. In the chorus, I can say we're more of a family than just students and teachers, you know, we understand each other. And we've, we've had our problems, but everything, you know, just keeps playing along. We've had our play, this, we had it last weekend, it was amazing. And it was her first year here for that teacher, the drama club teacher, and she did amazing, and we understood each other very well. And like my other friend Angel was saying, I am also in Algebra. Algebra was a great opportunity, and I'm very grateful that this school, you know, offered it to us. It helped us grow and understand and maybe like when we go to high school not, or not have that class, you know? I'm going into the SOAR program, so it's at Kennedy High School. So it's, it's a big advantage, you know, to skip that year of math, or I guess you took it, but
Accelerated.
Accelerated, yes. And I'm very grateful for my principal. She is so sweet, amazing, and very understanding, and along with all of the other teachers at Westside Middle School. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One of our younger members, our sixth-grade student.
Hi, I'm Mary Kate. I am in sixth-grade Blue House. I've only been here for a year, so no, I didn't really take Algebra.
Next year.
But all of the teachers are really helpful to me because every kid is a different kind of learner, and they help every kind. So if one day they're going to do hand-on learning, the next day they're going to actually explain it in a whole different way that you'd never even think of knowing it in. And also, I was in drama club. I had a lot of fun in drama club because we all kind of helped each other, we understood each other. So one person would help you with this part of the play. You have the older kids helping you with your lines, so you're really comfortable with what you're doing.
Wow, great. Fantastic job. And we had another teacher join us, Mr. Pillow, who was down the hall at our PTA meeting. And our PTA president, is he in the room?
He's still tied up.
Okay, he's still down the hall. Okay, any questions?
Commissioner, any questions? Thank you for embracing the turnaround, and I look forward to, you know, good, good things happening at Westside. I know you have a wonderful staff and students, and you've got all the ingredients to really make a difference, so thank you.
We're ready. We, our staff worked on two of our professional development days in April, right after we were informed that it was a turnaround process. And we started with that taking stock process, those tools that we learned when we were a compact school, and everyone provided initial feedback for approaching that turnaround process. So we are ready, we're excited. People are excited about clustering and reconfiguring the grade level teams. So it is, there is some excitement to that process, although it can be daunting, and we're ready.
And we encourage you to be bold and innovative and
We're ready.
Make it happen. Great, thank you.
Any other questions, Dr. Ruffin?
I don't have a question, but I want to thank you, Ms. Burns, and your students and staff who are here today for the presentation, and, you know, we'll look forward to some really tough turnaround work coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to introduce our, two, two more students from Willby that joined us who are part of our student advisory. We have Leva, and we've got Sarah Bell, if you could just
It wasn't Sarah.
Oh, it wasn't Sarah Bell? We had the wrong name, sorry.
Yes.
Do you have the right name?
I don't have.
Okay, that's okay, just tell us your right name.
Sabrina.
Sabrina, okay.
Sumreen.
Sumreen. And what grade are you in?
I'm in seventh grade.
Oh, great, okay, so you'll be with us. Well, welcome. Go ahead.
You're already present?
I did, well, I want you to, you say, you can introduce yourself too.
Well, I'm Leva, and you won't have me next year.
I know, you're a senior, and congratulations, we were at the National Honor Society induction. Congratulations on your induction into the Honor Society at Willby. And I know you left your mark on Willby. I could see that at the, at the induction ceremony, so thank you all for being here. Okay, next is public speaking. Is there anybody signed up? No, no speakers. Could I have a motion with your indulgence? I'd like to move up number twenty to be the next item, the strategic plan. We have a couple of members who have to leave early, and they would really like to participate in that discussion. Could I have a motion? So moved?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. So we're going to move to number twenty, which is a discussion of strategic plan by Dr. Ruffin. And again, thank you to all the staff and family members who came tonight, we really appreciate it, thank you.
And am I good if I had to stay here for
Dave, does she need, can she stay there, or?
During some discussions, I was asked by the board to also talk with everyone about the Academic Academy, and I'm going to be sharing with you the Academic Academy, the turnaround principles, and also the Early College High, which becomes part of what we're doing now as we've rolled out and beginning to roll out the Portrait of a Graduate. And it ties in at the end to how we would work together to be able to design a strategic plan that will be led by the board, but would be very inclusive of staff as we work towards a five-year plan to strategically move the district forward. You know, we, we worked since July of two thousand eighteen on a plan to really define what we expect our students to do and be able to learn, as well as what we expect in terms of character of mind. And then we moved to the next step, which is what are some of the things that we need to do in a district to really create a learning environment that would help enhance our student learning? We envision
A rigorous academically stimulating, creative, exciting, thought-provoking, inspiring, scholastically challenging learning environment. We actually want this for all children. But what we found is that through a lot of data and through a lot of listening and learning about the district, there were some schools that were extremely popular, and it wasn't because it was the school only, but it was a learning environment that parents wanted for their children. We found that many of our schools were very much into intervention mode and that our students really needed an environment to thrive. We saw that in the number of students that were, that were attempting to get in some of our magnet and application schools, and we had a waiting list of close to over a thousand students that wanted that kind of learning environment, yet we were not really strategically doing anything to provide that on a basis that students can have an opportunity to apply and then be exposed. We also looked at the Gifted and Talented Program, which is currently a pull-out program, so approximately two hundred students receiving an occasional pull-out program, and we thought that we can enhance that program in a way that would best benefit our students, especially our students whose parents really want them to be engaged in that kind of environment that we just described. We looked at our Portrait of a Graduate. We used this model to really define what some of you may have actually served on committees, you've attended some of the committees. When we met with parents, we met with our principals, we, principals, many of them did their own Portrait of a Graduate on their individual campuses. We met with community members, we met with lots of different stakeholders across the district, we met with Warhorse Development, and we also met with some of our partners. And we helped to define what is it we're trying to create in Waterbury Public Schools, and what are those characters, and what does that look like? And this model serves to help us as we move forward and talk with other stakeholders and keep at our forefront of what we're trying to do and develop within Waterbury Public Schools. We want some solid communicators. If you'll back up just a little bit, well, we said that it was important to be a collaborator and to be a lifelong learner, to be very knowledgeable. And that knowledge wasn't only about content, but it was also about life skills and really being able to take what they've learned and utilize it in such a way that would really make them a very strong student and a strong contributor to our society. We said we wanted problem solvers, to critically think, not only to feed students the answers, but have students really be able to determine and to explain and to defend their, their, their points of views. We wanted to have a growth mindset. We also wanted grit. Repeatedly, we heard parents and students and others say that we wanted our students to not be afraid of failing, but if they did, they needed to just understand that it's just part of the process, not to give up as a result of that. We wanted them to be strong, we wanted them to be able to have perseverance. That was a repeated theme. And of course, social and emotional intelligence, and we know that's critically important. We see a lot of that within our research, but then we, we need to define, so what does that mean? We can't only want our students to be that way, we have to create a school that helps them to be that way. And I think our further dialogue, which is work to come when we define our, our strategic plan, is to also define, so what do we expect of our school leaders? What is the portrait of a school leader, and what is the portrait of the staff? Because I think that's critically important. We know that we cannot achieve that unless it's the whole unit that is performing that way. As a result of some of the data that I shared with you, you know, I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to have that to you. When we looked at the number of students and what people were saying they would want for their students, we started looking at the Academic Academy. And that, that probably started many months ago when someone asked, so what is it that you think you might be able to bring to the district that you might have done in another district? And my answer was, I can't just bring something from another district. There has to be something that is going to be conducive to what Waterbury wants and needs, and we have to do it with a Waterbury lens to be able to move our students forward. So we started conversations about an Academic Academy. An Academic Academy that would best meet the needs of our students and gifted and talented, because we do have a tremendous amount of intervention across the district. And intervention is good, but it's only good when students can also get out of intervention. And it's also only good if you're also meeting the needs of all students, because in all means all, you really have to stimulate the interest in academic development of all students, not just some. And, and so as a pull-out program, the Gifted and Talented Program was probably not as strong as it could be. I recognize the, the great people that were working with it, but at the same time, when you are having instruction only one day a week as a pull-out program, obviously it can't be as strong as if you intentionally designed something very strong for your students to be able to grow and to succeed. In addition to that, we recognize that there are many students who are not labeled gifted and talented who want an academically challenged environment. So the conversation around the Academic Academy began as an application school, as a school that's going to be created and designed for Waterbury and to meet the student, the needs of our students, and that we were going to move forward with a fourth grade through eighth grade model of Academic Academy, a school within a school model. We've actually started in, 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 for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. Now, the reason that it's going to be at Wallace, I was, and that we were going to move forward with a fourth grade through eighth grade model of Academic Academy, a school within a school model. We've actually started the application process. We've met two very intentional parent meetings and more to come next week, where we talked about what that school could look like. And the number one question was, where is it going to be located? And yesterday, and, and the day before yesterday, I had an opportunity to talk with the staff at Wallace and the staff at Crosby, because the Academic Academy, fourth through eighth grade, will be at Wallace for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. Now, the reason that it's going to be at Wallace, I was looking for a, a place that had space to grow. Wallace currently has one of the larger, already larger gifted and talented student enrollment at the school, but in addition to that, Wallace used to have over twelve hundred students, and it does not have that currently, so there's room to grow. In addition to that, I wanted to also place it in a, in an environment where students could attend from fourth grade through eighth grade with a straight way into a high school and a career pathway that we're designing for our high schools. And, and that left me with two choices. So we have two campuses, two, two joint campuses that could possibly have provided that kind of learning environment. And I chose Crosby and Wallace because of its location and its capacity to continue to grow and to also share the resources among staff. I, I felt that if we had three Academic Academies, because there was some conversation earlier about perhaps making two elementary schools an Academic Academy, but what I had to come to realize was, it's, it's sometimes challenging to maintain staff. And so if we wanted a world language teacher, and we said that we wanted academically rigorous environment and learning across all three of those schools, what ultimately would have happened is one school would have been better than the other because we would not have been able to sustain it. And it was very important to sustain whatever we started. I think that we have to build the trust that people know that when we're saying we're going to do this, we're not going to eliminate it because we found out that we were trying to do it everywhere, and none of it was excellent. So we wanted, that's why I chose one school, that's why I chose a school that would allow fourth through eighth grade, and then that's why I chose a school that would be able to have the academic career pathways, as well as career tech career pathways, and ultimately in two thousand twenty, twenty-one, an early college high school. The application process has already started. We, the very first day, the applications came out, we had several people applied, we had another spike yesterday after I met with teachers and administrators who might have an interest in teaching at the Academic Academy. It was an informational meeting only, but we are looking for a team that would help create this academic learning environment, so it's not a top-down model where, you know, I've told everybody, you are going to do this. Because I do believe there has to be ownership of this leadership there, as well as the teachers that are going to be teaching in the program, and an opportunity to really go into some professional learning. So the deadline for application is June seventeenth, next week. deadline for application is June seventeenth. Next week, there will be a real blitz of several staff members going to all of our elementary and middle schools and private schools. And we want to make certain that we talk about our academic academy and how a person can apply to enroll. Then the application screening will be from the seventeenth of June to the twenty first. That means we're going to look at the applications for completion. We're going to look to see how many grade levels we might have that are represented. And then we're going to also look at having interviews with the students as well as with the families on June twenty fourth through twenty sixth. This will be face to face interviews with the children as well as with their families. And then we're going to notify everyone who has been accepted on July eighth. And it's very important that our families know that this is not only for gifted and talented students, but gifted and talented students applying will automatically have acceptance into the program. But we want students and parents who are also interested in the academically rigorous and challenging learning environment. We will ask that by the nineteenth of July, that parents make a decision if this is really where they want their children to attend school for the next school year. And then of course, school begins on August twenty sixth. The programmatic overview, fourth through eighth grade, less transitions for the students. I envision it being a school within a school with the academic academy students attending a cohort of classes together and elective classes with all of the rest of the children in the school. It's very important that all of the middle schools have a program of study so that students have an opportunity to enroll in either band or choir or art and not take it as an exploratory class, but take it as a class where they have an opportunity to truly become proficient. I think that is also the substance that helps us grow our high school programs so that we can have outstanding programs in fine arts across the district, not just a pull up program for the fine arts as well. We're going to also offer a world language that is going to be Spanish. We expect that by the time students are in the sixth, seventh and eighth grade, or even the fourth and fifth grade, that by the time students are going to go through middle school, they would potentially have earned a high school credit. And therefore, when they are enrolling in a high school, they will already enter high school with a world language credit as well as maybe an algebra one credit, as well as perhaps down the line, maybe even a science credit. So we envision that happening based on the student enrolled and based on the, really paying attention to how students are learning and what's best for them. We expect that it's going to be above grade level and on grade level learning. And we are going to make certain that the academic academy comes with supports. So as parents are going to be enrolling and making the decision that this is their school, parents are going to be notified that this is not a school that we're designing so that we can put children out of it. We want everyone to know that we're going to offer some supports. So if students are struggling, we want a commitment that they're going to attend the tutoring that will be provided. The after school or perhaps before school access to help so that they can be successful in this learning environment. And we also want commitment for parent involvement and parent engagement within the school, as well as we want to make sure that we have clubs and organizations to really make certain that the students are receiving everything that they need. I think that having a school within a school model like that also makes it very possible for other children who are in the school to receive some additional benefits that they may not be able to receive if they were in a standalone school without that additional resource. And then of course, we want access to the fine arts for all of our students and we want it in such a way that it's really going to build the students proficiency. There's a tremendous amount of scholarships available for students in fine arts. If you have a very well thought out program where students are, know how to sight read, they know how to sight seeing, they know how to develop portfolios for their art projects. It helps with public speaking. It helps with communication and open stores and avenues for students that are yet unimagined. So we're adopting a model for learning. There are a lot of different models that we can offer as professional development for our teachers so that they could learn how to develop project based learning, interest based learning, field trips for the students. But I think critically important is that we begin to leverage some of the training that we already have within our districts with our students and with our teachers at Maloney and Rotella, as well as Rams and Careers. I think there's professional learning that some of the staff at those schools have that we could leverage by making certain that the teachers that teach in the academic academy have access to, as well as opening doors of opportunities for the teachers at those schools to attend together on project based learning, or whether we want to really expand humanities within the school. I think there's opportunities for learning and growth that we could leverage that way. As we're moving into the turnaround model, and then when I met with the staff that, the informational meeting yesterday, and I've met with all of the current middle school principals and the schools, the principals of the schools that are identified as focus or turnaround, we've already met and we're going to be meeting additionally to talk about what turnaround really means. Because the turnaround model is a very strategic model. It's, turnaround is not easy work, but it could be interesting work, but it's very intense. Because what you're looking at is not just tweaking a few things, you're looking at really doing one or two things and doing it extremely well and being laser focused on it. And I wanted to make certain that in the informational meeting we shared yesterday, that parents, that the teachers or the administrators who were interested in turnaround, who attended that meeting, understood that one of the first things that you had to do in turnaround is believe that all children can learn. Not just some, not just those children, but all children. And that the commitment of the people that are working in that school really focused on all meaning all. That was critically important because the turnaround work in and of itself is so challenging that if you don't believe that, then the children will not succeed. Only some of them will succeed and you'll think that it's okay. Because, you know, we have to have high expectations for all children. And so in the turnaround model and the discussion that I had yesterday, we talked about the turnaround leadership, how critically important that was, the talent development, the instructional transformation and the shift and the culture. Since, you know, I've been in Waterbury, I hear a lot about, you know, we really had to take care of the climate and the culture before we got into the instruction. And while I understand the importance of a well managed and a well behaved and a well operational unit, it's critically important that culture is also part of learning. Learning is part of how you create a culture for a campus. So you can't really separate them. I know sometimes people try to separate the two and saying, yeah, but they've got to be well behaved. Yes, but they've got to be well behaved, but they also have to learn as part of, I mean, this is a school. So we have to make sure that the behaviors are not because they're bored. And so we have to really make sure that the instruction is such that our students are not just reading extra because they happen to finish their homework first, or they're just not really in an advanced class because they're well behaved. We have to make certain that in a turnaround model specifically, but for all of us, we have to make certain that this design is not just something that we have on a nice model and it looks really nice, but in a turnaround model, you really are very strategic. Those are four things that have to happen if you're going to successfully implement turnaround. And very importantly, after you've turned around a school, you have to continue doing this, which is why Crosby went from being a turnaround model to a focus school. And now the district is going to make certain that we continue to support Crosby. We're not going to take away any of their resources because they've gone from turnaround to focus. They need that continued support. So it's critically important in a turnaround model that we do not just pour a lot of resources and a lot more people into the school, but that we're very strategic because once the turnaround money is out, we have to sustain that model because kids deserve it and teachers deserve it as well. So in turnaround, we have, we have two administrators that are attending a Harvard Institute that we invested quite a few thousands of dollars to make certain we applied. It was an application, so you were not just automatically granted. It wasn't just a regular seminar that anybody could apply for. We offered it to all of our turnaround principals. We offered it to our focus schools, not to, not to all of the focus schools. We offered it to Kennedy. We offered it to Wallace, North End and Westside because, and we offered it because we knew that the work of turnaround, especially moving forward in Waterbury, is going to be significantly different than maybe the turnaround work that the district has done before. And I wanted them to understand that from the institute because there were experts there this week that were attending that was going to help them to rethink and to think about what turnaround would mean for them so that they can come back and to really implement that within the district. Of the principals, I had one principal that accepted that offer and I had an assistant principal that eagerly accepted that offer. And they're there with the academic, chief academic officer and my deputy, as well as the assistant superintendent that's in charge of the schools that are in turnaround. So they're there together, working. In the meantime, as they were there working, I received notification from the commissioner's office that our three middle schools have been accepted into the commissioners network.
Wow.
And what that means is that the work now becomes even more defined because now those three schools with leadership have to look at developing a plan all of next school year. So two thousand nineteen twenty, the schools will be responsible for developing a very strong plan in order to be able to get the funding that is associated with commissioners network. We have three schools. It is very rare that a district gets three schools. We're very fortunate that we've received three. What that means, however, if you'll remember what happened with Crosby and Walsh, that came with the funding to be able to recreate those two schools with the strategic planning of the principals and a committee of people. So as a result of those three schools now being in the commissioners network, the responsibility is going to be on all of us to be able to form a committee with board members and the unions and the school team and school leadership team and parents and students and really begin to define, so what is that going to mean for the schools based on the data that we have? Because while they're all in turnaround, they all have specific data that's relative to them. And so that's an opportunity to be able to address that. So I'm pleased that we do have the commissioners network, but that now means that we now have something of substance to be able to help us to create a really good plan. And two thousand nineteen twenty will be that planning year and two thousand twenty twenty one will be implementation year. So our working theory of action is that strong leadership, a principle to prioritize improvement and communicate its urgency, to monitor goals and to customize and target support to meet the needs of students and teachers, the instructional transformation, which is critically important. It's not just teaching, it's teaching the standards at the appropriate grade level for all children and then applying some interventions as needed, but then monitoring to make certain students do not remain in intervention their entire years there, to increase the rigor across, to make sure that we have evidence based instruction and to remove barriers for making, remove barriers for students and to create opportunities for them to grow and to develop, not just the students that are in need of intervention, but the students that are hard performing as well, so that their needs can be met. The culture shift is critical to the collective responsibility. When we say all means all, we have to hold ourselves accountable for that. Everybody has to be held accountable for that. And then the talent development, to be able to recruit and develop high quality teachers and staffs that are committed to that work long term. And that piece was critically important also in making a decision about the academic academy because we do, we are challenged at times with being able to maintain a teacher in certain areas, especially certain areas where it's hard to find a staff or the staff leaves and it's very difficult to replace that staff. And so the more spread out you try to make programs, the more difficult it is to really have fidelity of a program across the district. And we didn't want to have that challenge. We wanted to minimize the risk of that happening for all of our students. We believe if we do all of those things, then we could dramatically improve instruction, improve teaching and learning, improve the outcome for our students in the district. And then finally, the visual of a portrait of a graduate, which is, which is something I think that is critically important when we are trying to define a portfolio of options for all of our students. When we say all means all, we certainly know that all of our schools are expected to do an outstanding job and we offer options. We've offered options before, but now we have more options that we can make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students in the district. We already have a commitment to pre K in our district. We have some pre K eight schools in our district. We offer pre K through post secondary education in Waterbury. And now we have the pre K to eight. They are called community schools, but I'm sure we're going to talk about that when we do our strategic plan. They're called community schools, but they don't have the support to develop as community schools. And so while they are working with Boost as a community school, there is still not a real community school coordinator or someone to really help them to develop into that community school, that one stop shop, so to speak, that they meet the needs of the students both before school, during school, after school, and also are open to the community to use. In order to do that, principals really do need help. Teachers need help to be able to communicate that, to go out, to speak with parents beyond just when parents come to schools. And so we do have opportunities, and I think we're going to talk more about that in strategic planning, with our community schools, our pre K eight schools. We also now have, we're going to be opening a transition academy in two thousand nineteen twenty to address our needs of our sixteen to, I keep forgetting the age group.
Twenty one.
It's to twenty one year old students, right Melissa?
Eighteen to twenty one.
Eighteen?
Nineteen.
It's nineteen to twenty one and in a transition academy to help our students with life skills as well as an opportunity to connect with the workforce so that once they leave us, they are going to be leaving us with some skills and they will leave us with some employment. And I think that's critically important for all students. As well, you see that we have our comprehensive middle schools. We also have our magnet schools and our lottery schools with a long waiting list that we hope to be able to resolve some of that through our academic academy, which will open in two thousand nineteen twenty at Wallace. We are looking at a future, maybe two years from now, of a bilingual or dual language academy. As a matter of fact, some of our staff and myself will be going to Puerto Rico at the end of the month at a dual language seminar. And during that time, we're also going to have an opportunity to look at a recruitment of staff because we want to consistently, Commissioner Adana, you cannot come to this?
I could translate.
That's right. And then of course, we want to make certain that we continuously build a very strong foundation. Where are we going with this in terms of, so what happens with all of this that we're doing? We want our students, once they leave us in the eighth grade, to have choices and options. We believe that we are on a right path to create career pathways at all of our high schools, not only career academy, but pathways that are aligned with workforce development, careers that are aligned to giving students certifications so that they could leave our high schools, any high school, with certifications that will give them credentials for their post secondary learning and or workforce. We also have an opportunity with Nogga Talk Valley Community College to develop an early college high school. We attempted it last year as an early college opportunity for Kennedy, but I envisioned that as an early college high school. And so we will not be moving forward in two thousand nineteen twenty with an early college high school, but I anticipate the following year, we will have an early college high school. And that will be one of the pathways that I envision will happen across me, that we will have an academic academy that will have been well established and that there will be an early college high school at Crosby, which allows our students to move forward there with some planning and advanced planning. And with that being said, while that is an opportunity along with other career pathways, Kennedy High School will continue to really grow and redefine the SOAR programs that it offers students at Kennedy High School an opportunity for an academically rigorous environment. But we want to really redefine that so that it really has a lot of meaning to the students in two thousand nineteen and beyond. And when I say that, I know it's a very well thought of program, but I don't believe everybody knows that it currently continues to exist. I think some people do, but I don't believe everybody does. And so we're going to work on that. As well as Kennedy also continues to have a partnership, as some of our other high schools, with UConn. And we want to certainly continue that and we want to build our relationship with Post as well. And we envision that will be, will redefine the program that they currently have so that we can make that stronger. I know that there were some conversations before that anticipated that that program wasn't going to exist. That program's going to exist. It's just going to be redefined and it's really going to have, you know, a lot of focus on it so that it can continue to serve the children at Willby. We want all of our schools to offer quality programs. And we need to redefine those programs and we and really make certain that our students, our families know what choices that they have so that they can continue to be successful. And so you see, we have the full gamut. In addition to that, we have an adult education program and you will see our students on adult ed will be graduating next week. At least one cohort of students will be graduating next week. But I think very importantly is the opportunity with adult ed to work with the workforce development and to really help and assist with the youth bill program that Commissioner Awad has been very successful in bringing us some resources as well as a re-envision of what the opportunities could be for our 16- to 23-year-old students. They could be dropouts, they could be in the youth in Waterbury, so it's very specific to Waterbury. And we want to make certain that we actively are seeking these young people so that they could become a part of that program. They will work with Habitat for Humanities, they will work simultaneously in an adult ed learning environment so that they can earn a GED and at the same time, they will be able to earn some funds while they're also learning the carpentry and they're learning the work so that they could also be employed and they will be contributing by building two houses with Habitat for Humanities. I think that's an excellent opportunity, but it also tells us all of the opportunities that we have for all of our children, pre-K through post-secondary opportunities for the people that reside in Waterbury. I think it's a great time for us all and I envision that we will have an opportunity collectively to really design a strategic plan. I have looked into someone coming in, the Center for School Change, coming in and perhaps doing the work with us to work on the core values, which will drive the work that we need, look at the vision, look at the mission, and of course, to collectively work on defining some goals that will be our next five years of work within our district. That concludes my presentation at this time.
Wow, are you ambitious. Excellent, I'm excited. Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. Doc, first of all, very excited. You know, I think this is going to be one of the things that we, the group, have been asking for for a while, so I'm going to really come in, shake up what we've been doing, understand that just because we've been doing it this way for a while doesn't necessarily mean it's the right thing. So I think this is a very good step forward and I'm really excited about it. Some questions I had about the grade, fourth grade academies. Did you have an ideal enrollment, what this would look like?
I don't have an idea at this time. I'm going to have a better idea after the 17th, but I can tell you that looking at the number of applicants that we've had as of today, we have enough students, if everyone who applied as of today got accepted, we have enough for one class in every grade level, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
Terrific. And now that, the student who applies to, let's say he's a fifth grader today and he applies, he's accepted. And during his first year in the academy, maybe there's some struggles. Is this the type of setup where you're reapplying each year or once you're in, you're in until you're not?
Once you're in, you're in. And if you're struggling in advance, you will know that there are going to be some resources and some structures built into the school that you will know that you're going to be entitled to some kind of assistance to help you to be able to maintain your grades.
And now the student who's in this academy, are they a Wallace student? Are they a Stango Academy student? Where do they go to school?
They can go to school anywhere in Waterbury.
No, but I mean, once they get accepted into the academy.
Oh, oh, no, okay. Well, they are a Wallace student, so it's a school within a school.
Yep.
And I still have a piece to define with the state because we have two options. It could be a school within a school and they could have their, kind of like their own identity, which I don't believe, that's not where we're going. It will be a program within Wallace.
Because that leads me to two different questions. One, since, you know, the all-important state testing, so now all of a sudden, we'll kind of be changing the lay of the land. You know, we've built some history, you know, our current middle schools have been getting this on the S-Bex. Once we switch this, we're going to have now a new yardstick. Obviously, I would imagine that, you know, the Wallace scores would improve in some manner. And if we're taking, you know, some of the best and the brightest out of the others, we would therefore, I imagine, expect some kind of, maybe dip on the other side. So that would be one thing that might concern me. And 100 years ago, I used to be an athlete, so I was always worried about what sports team I was on.
Really?
Well, 100 years ago, you were an athlete, 50 years ago, I was an athlete. So now all these kids would become Wallace players, for lack of a...
Yes.
Okay. On the teacher's side, and you touched on this a little bit, is there, I imagine you and the administration, the staff will make sure that there's, you know, some kind of protocols in place. Is there any concern about a brain drain there where teachers are thinking, wow, I really like the idea of this academy, as they should, and kind of all are best and are brightest and especially the people who are teaching in some of our tougher-to-find academic areas all want to go there? What happens to the rest of the district?
I can give you an example of what really happened the first time that academy, school within a school, was created. I can give you an example of that, if you would like for me to. Number one, it's not for everybody. So there's an interest based on, you know, the rigor and the academic, you know, offerings and the gifted and talented students, the ones that are not gifted and talented but really are just without a label and really want to take advantage of it. So not everybody applies for the academy, even though it is very attractive. What happened was when other schools, other middle schools, other schools thought, oh, gosh, they're going to take my very best students, what they did was they actually started offering some of the same courses. Because anybody can offer an Algebra I.
Yep.
But do they? Any one can offer the project-based learning, but do they? So it elevated their level of expectation, oh, my God, you know, I don't want to lose my students, so what am I going to do? Why should my students stay with me? So it really elevated the programmatic overview for the individual schools that were not the academic academy. The other thing that happened was the teachers that were teaching in the academic academy the very first year, you know, it was a really great experience, but it didn't elevate the level of performance for the school because of growth. Because supposing a number of students, because they are academically willing to take that challenge, are going to be proficient, well, yeah, they're going to be proficient. But are you expecting it at a level that really elevates that level of rigor? And that didn't happen the first year. You know, everybody was so happy to be able to teach in an academic academy that the level didn't go up the way they were supposed to. And so growth suffered. So the students passed, but they weren't growing. So we had to go back and we had to really not only look at that data, but we had to say, it looks good, but it's not the best that we can do. By the third year, it was getting there. And by that time, other schools were looking at how they could look at staffing to be able to create structures within their school because every school has gifted and talented or academically willing students that really want to stay in their neighborhood schools. And so it served to create another learning environment, but it didn't drain everybody else, providing everybody else stepped up the game.
One other question I have, if I may, Madam President, for the staffing. So if I'm a seventh-grade history teacher at Wallace, does my day look like periods one and two, I'm teaching my traditional classes, maybe period three, I'm now teaching the academy? Or is there a wall where you're teaching for one or the other?
At one time, that's probably going to be a wall that says, I'm going to be teaching in the academy and my teaching load eventually, maybe not the first year, but eventually I'm teaching students in the academy and that's my schedule.
But that might not be year one?
That might not be year one, depending on how many students are going to be enrolled in the academy year one.
Perfect, thank you very much.
And everyone will be in an elective course based on their interest with other students in the school and play athletics.
Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. Doctor, you mentioned when you talked about the numbers of the students that are applying to the academy, you have enough, you anticipate for one for every grade level if they all get accepted. So that brings my question. Do you have a criteria that some will be accepted and some will not be accepted? Do you have some kind of guideline that they have to meet? And can you just briefly discuss that guideline?
Yes, we have some guidelines. The application process, once it's in, there's a very small writing sample that we're asking. Additionally, we'll be looking at some of the traditional test scores as well as the tests that we give in the district for gifted and talented, for those students that have taken that or the ones who have not taken that, that we're going to take a look at their next-generation test scores. We'll be looking at their performance on iReady. We'll be looking at some of the district traditional tests that we give to the students. As well, we're going to be scoring the interview process and also the interest level for the students and the families to be able to engage in such an academy. So there will be a scoring, kind of a rubric, that will determine the final decision on who gets accepted into the academy.
So just touching back...
And teacher recommendation.
Right, very important. Also, just touching back on the writing sample you mentioned, so someone on your team will be judging the quality of that writing sample?
It's...
Or the fact they just did the writing sample?
Correct. And there will be a committee that will be responsible for screening, for instance, you know, to see which ones move forward beyond just applying. And then there will be a committee by that time with the leadership of whoever's going to be leading the academy to really look into the final interviews with the parents and with the students to make their final decision and a scoring.
All right, thank you.
Vice President Harvey?
Thank you.
Then we'll go down.
Hi. Okay. I just had three, I made notes that I wanted to ask. When you mentioned Dr. Ruffin, you said, mentioned Post University and UConn. We still partner with Nogatuck Valley, right?
We do.
Okay.
We absolutely do. Nogatuck Valley is where we're looking at the early college high school for Crosby by the time that we get to that model. And I mentioned UConn because all of our schools, but Kennedy also has a strong dual enrollment with UConn that we're going to continue. And we also want to continue to develop the relationship for post-secondary opportunities with Post.
Right, okay. All right, just want to make sure, because I don't want to see Dr. Daisy if we leave her out. Okay, so we do the academies and we're starting with the 2019, 2020 year, school year. Who is keeping track of the district? I don't want to use the word juggling, but I can't think of a better, another word for it. When, let's say, one student goes to the academy, they go to Wallace, whatever school they're coming from leaves an opening. So who's keeping track of that? The intake center or what? Because what I'm edging towards is we have some students who, because their school is filled to capacity, that they have to go across town to another school. So if that school is, now has an opening, who is keeping track of that and to inform that student? How are we going to do that?
I think that that's a collective between the IT department, the individual schools, and once the students have been accepted and the July 19th date of acceptance, I think that that's when people get to work and be able to determine this student is coming from X school and which one's coming from the other one with communication to the school that's losing the student and the school that's accepting the student.
Okay, so we're going to leave that up to the schools to iron that out and not...
No, 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 there's going to be a person that's going to make certain that all of that happens.
Okay, that's my question, yeah, okay.
But the school has to be notified so that they'll know that that student is not coming back for the next year.
Right, okay. And last but not least, adult education, one of our biggest concerns with adult education or the students have is childcare issues, okay? It, you know, they want to do better, they want to get their GED, but, you know, they have children and they have to be concerned about that. And they pay a certain amount, they can ask for hardship and pay a lesser amount, but they still are not working. So I don't know how we're going to juggle that, but I hope we're looking at that.
And I can't answer that question at this time. I can look into whether that's something that could feasibly be written into the adult ed application because adult ed is written through an application. It's really not managed by the district. And so I can look into it, but I can't answer the question accurately at this time.
Okay, so we are going to look into it, though?
I will look into it, but I cannot respond to it and I cannot give you an answer.
Got it.
Until I look into whether that could feasibly be written into the grant for subsequent years.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Commissioner Adorno.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Ruffin, during the informational session yesterday at Crosby, someone asked about the possibility of the hours being extended to accommodate the, can you, that was my first question, I have one more, but can you talk a little bit about, because you weren't sure as of yet if the hours might be extended?
And I'm still not. And one of the reasons why I'm not circling is because Wallace, along with the rest of the middle schools, are also in turnaround. So during that discussion, as we began talking about, you know, length of the school day, I don't know what that's going to look like in two years from now. But I imagine when the school year opens this year, it's going to be on Wallace's schedule and we're not going to, because of the time element, it's probably going to be in the same schedule that everybody always, already started in. But in another couple of years from now, I don't know what that will look like because of turnaround and because of the ability to be able to collectively collaborate with the teachers and leadership of the school to make decisions.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question is the selection committee that chooses the students, how are they going to be chosen? Is it Wallace staff alone or...
I would envision that being members of the people that are going to be working in the academy as well as one or two people from central office who are invested in it. Dr. Baker is one of the people that's spearheading that, along with the fact that, you know, Dr. Efferson is the assistant superintendent in charge of it and Ms. Buckley is also intricately involved, so is my deputy. So we're going to select a committee. If the staff would like to do a model similar to one that we've done in the past, it took more than just one committee to be able to assure that we interviewed, you know, as many applicants as we're going to get. Might not be as many this first year, but it's going to come.
Good, thank you. And I'm really excited to actually see this through, so I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam President.
Commissioner Awad.
Yeah, I just wanted to allow you the opportunity to clear up some concerns that have been brought to some of whom might have seen the email we got today and other questions. This academy is designed to address the tag students and basically end the pull-out program that we used to know as FOCUS and put them in a unique opportunity at Wallace. This will have no bearing on the current tag programs in the other high schools, am I correct?
It does.
It does, how does it affect them?
It does, because this is what I've been informed. I was informed that before I ever got here, that tag didn't exist at high school. That's why the high schools had SOAR, ACEs, and ABA. And so it does affect it in terms of there's not a dedicated, one person only, that does it. It doesn't prohibit them from offering an enriched learning environment, which I think they all should do that. And they have those three programs that are also in board policy that they should be doing really well. And that's why we're going to revisit them, to make certain that they are meeting the needs of all of the students, which would include our tag students at the high school level. And it does eliminate the pull-out program across the district. So in order to be able to receive a true tag type of academic offering, it will be offered at the academic academy.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have a question? Use the microphone, please.
So with the academic academy, I'm wondering if in the earlier years, will you have a strong focus on building basic skills for children about how to read, how to write? Because one of the big issues with children who are considered gifted at a young age is that, at a young age, education comes early, easy to them, but then as they grow older and they get into tougher subjects, they get into higher advanced, more advanced courses, what happens to them is they don't really necessarily have the basic skills because it wasn't focused for them when they were younger. So then, when they crash and burn, they think... So then, when they crash and burn, they think, oh, okay, I'm a failure because I can't do this anymore when everyone expects me to. So will they still have that focus in the early years of the academy?
I have to think that they need to have that focus. It's very important. And also, to answer your question, you know, when you, when you said that they haven't been offered that, that in itself is an issue. So we really need to make certain that that tier, what we call tier-one instruction, which is good, solid instruction that everybody should get, everybody needs to get that. What I'd like to see, that we did not go into this this year, is a summer reading list. I have not seen a summer reading list for Waterbury. And, and I have not really seen, like, recommended novels that students should read from young age all the way, you know, to, through adulthood. And I believe that in the future, it's not happening this summer because, you know, we have, what, five days left? But, but I do believe that's missing from us to be able to stimulate the interest of students to read throughout the year, not just on their in-school. So read, you read for learning, but you also read for fun. And, and I think we need to, we need to stress that. So thank you for asking that question.
I have one more.
Yes, go ahead.
So, also, there's, will you also have a focus on developing these students' social skills? Because, because they will crash if they don't have those social skills.
That social and emotional intelligence that we talked about, that's came out in the portrait of a graduate? Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Commissioner Sweeney.
Dr. Ruffin, have, we had a look, a chance to look at the transportation, and I know we don't, haven't picked the students, we don't know where they're all coming from, but have we had, do we have some sense of how we're going to handle transportation? Because they're not going to be necessarily in the Crosby-Wallace area.
Yes, I, and I can't answer what that might look like, but I did, very briefly, talk with Jeff today. After we know who will be attending and after the parents return the form that indicate whether they're going to transport their students to the program or they need transportation, then we could develop a transportation plan which will also require budget.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is, well, we have, is Linda Francisi here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have two, three, four, five, and six. You were hiding behind the bookcase.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Few items on the agenda tonight. The first one being the authorized signature change form. This is a form that the state requires if there's ever a change in the authorized signer, that it goes in front of the board for a vote. So that's the first one, we got a vote.
Any questions on that? Okay, go ahead, number two.
Second is the healthy food certification. This is something that we've been doing since 2007, 2008. Again, this is something that the state requires, that we go in front of the board for a vote, not only to participate, but also for beverage exemption and for a food exemption. So that's three separate votes for the healthy food certification.
Three separate what?
Votes.
Votes?
Correct.
Three, oh, that's three, four, and five.
Correct.
Are there any changes from last year that we should know?
No changes.
Just the same, the same amounts, the same?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So that's three, four, and five, okay? And six?
Six is the approval of the contract for-
The freezer and cooler out of the facility.
For all trades. We had an RFP, there was three bidders, and we chose all trades as the winning bidder after a committee was formed and all trades was selected.
When, when are you going to get into your place?
Well, once, once this, once this vote gets taken, gets taken and-
You're going to fill that freezer?
This contract, this contract's approved, it takes about six, six to eight weeks to build the freezer. So we're hoping middle of August, we'll have the freezer and cooler up, we can start running our facility out of there. And in the meantime, also be working on building and designing the kitchen, which we've already started the design process on.
Any questions for our food service commissioner?
The generator is for a backup for the freezer and refrigerator?
Correct.
And you say gas generator, is that actually a propane gas generator?
It's natural gas, that's already in the building, we're hooking into the line.
So if they're digging out in the street and they happen to break the line, then you don't have a backup generator?
Correct. We're hoping, we're hoping that they won't also kill our electricity.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a question, and maybe you can give me the answer at another time, but I'm interested to see that if there is going to be any changes to the menus and the ability to serve a variety of foods and more fresh foods and so forth, now that we have our own facility.
Correct. We're looking to utilize more local fresh products because we're going to be serving from a centralized kitchen as opposed to receiving products that's frozen, reheated. So, so that is the goal.
That's really important, because I think nutrition and healthy food is, is really important. And I was at a meeting recently- At the United Way, and Waterbury does have certain sections that are considered food deserts, that's a term that I'm becoming familiar with. And I think just access to, to healthy food in our schools, which they get two meals a day, is really critical. So the more we can think about that and actually help kids to understand cooking and what good food is, and I know, I just was very happy, I was with Linda-
Linda Salvador.
And she did a contest about food waste, and the winners were at Rotella School, and I, I went to the ceremony and the kids were all excited, but I had no idea. I walked out and there was this beautiful garden. They're growing all kinds of things, and it was just really exciting. They have a, a student there who's been helping from the Food Corps?
Correct.
Is that it? How many other Food Corps people do you have?
There's two, two members.
And they both are at Rotella?
We have Rotella and Duggan.
Now, will that, that program continue? Will we be getting other-
We're hoping. Actually, there was an interview conducted today to see going forward if we could get two other members to be able to-
The kids were just so excited, and they were showing me, one little kid, Nick, said, "Oh, look at that plant." And then he said, "I really don't know what it is, but it's going to be good." He was cute, but anyway. But thank you for all your hard work, because I'm very excited about this, and I think nutrition and healthy eating is just so critical to our students, so-
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Gorman, number seven. Request approval of amendment two to the agreement with PTSMA, a select physical therapy to provide athletic training services for interscholastic sports. Good evening.
Evening, how are you?
I'm good.
To put it in its simplest form, this is simply a repeat of this past year. I have negotiated with them to provide the exact same services that they have provided at the same cost. So there are no changes to this from this year, other than the dates. And I'm hoping that you will approve so I can get this through Alderman and have it in place by July 1st.
Okay, have we had a problem with staffing? Are we able to get the trainers?
There was, they lost one trainer about three weeks ago, but there's another one coming on, and they had filled in the hours that they were missing from that third trainer not being available. She moved out of state, so.
Any questions for Mr. Gorman? And by the way, thank you so much for all your work with that kids marathon, it was amazing.
It's a blast, we love it.
Twenty-five hundred kids, and I don't know what you did, but you had an in with God that there was no rain.
Just also to say one thing about that that most people don't know, because they see all the kids out in the street, they see everybody excited and everybody around. If you walked through Library Park 20 minutes after the event was over, it was clean as a whistle in there.
Wow, that's amazing.
And so that's a tribute to the kids and the parents as well, that we had over 5,000 people in that park, and 20 minutes later, there wasn't a thing on the ground, so I just wanted to toss that in.
It was so well organized and all the partners, but thank you, I know you played a big role in that as Mike Dalton and Jim Arwork and your whole team, so thank you, we really appreciate it.
Jay Martinez up in northern, as well.
Jay Martinez, right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, number eight is Tara Bastoni.
Good evening. I'm a little under the weather, so my voice is not the best. Good evening, Commissioner Superintendent Ruffin. I'm here tonight on behalf of Darren Schwartz to request permission to continue our current contract with the College Board. Currently, we assess all of our students' grades eight through 12 with either the PSAT eight, nine in the fall, the regular PSAT, or the SAT, and we've been doing so since 2014. We would like to add spring testing for our current grades nine and 10 in preparation for their junior year of their SAT. This would allow us to have multiple data points from the same suite of assessments in a given year to better monitor student progress, which has been a gap at the high school level compared to our elementary and middle school testing. Testing. A key part of the program will continue, that is, students will have access to resources and practice tests that are based on their results from this assessment of all the prior administrations. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Nope? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Herman. School safety report? All right, Mr. Herman. We are so happy to see you. I'm glad that you're, you're on the mend.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. President, Madam President, and Vice President, and Commissioners. I am so happy to be back here working with the wonderful staff we have here in Waterbury. I started in this job in 2014, right after, after that tragedy at Sandy Hook. But prior to that, I, I started here in 2009 in this building as the in-school suspension supervisor for West Side Middle School. And I learned so much about children and about the issues that they're dealing with, and I'm so happy to be here, and I wouldn't be where I am today without the reinforcement and, and learning that I obtained here. So I wanted to thank that, that group.
Okay.
So, good evening, Commissioners, and Dr. Ruffin. We prepared a brief report, I think you may have it in front of you or on your screens. So I'll just run through it quickly and, and take any questions. We've outlined our, our department mission and how we accomplish that. And I think just the core of that mission is everything else we do in the facilities and operations department, you just heard the food services department, is we like to think that all the things we do are not just those things randomly, security or food or painting or HVAC work, but it's those things for students. And providing a safe and healthy environment for students is our, is our goal with respect to the security department, and that's always on the forefront of our mind in our planning. So, as I came here this past year, one of the first things I did in all the divisions was an analysis of the strengths and weaknesses of the various departments, and one of the best things to find in the security department was that the proactive thinking of Waterbury and taking advantage of the school's security grants that were made available was post-Sandy Hook when, when John came on board. So what you find here is we have a strong and experienced staff with John and the collaboration with the police department, obviously the mayor, and his past history has handed it down as, as security and cooperation with the police department as a main focus and, frankly, requirement. We have the eight full-time school resource officers throughout the district, and those officers are specifically trained in crisis intervention, de-escalation techniques in this past year, as I think you've heard from Sergeant Pep Resnick at prior meetings, working on that restorative practices training, and they've all gone through that, and they work closely now as the shift has happened with Dr. Baker. And really intensified the approach with respect to supporting, mentoring, and working on restorative practices and de-escalation versus expulsion arrests and the, and the like. John and I have continued with the collaboration led by John as far as coordinating with police department, fire department, or other first responders with respect to lockdown drills, shelter in place, and, and so forth. There was a stark shift when John was out and when John came back to the fidelity to those, those trainings and so forth. And I, I think is as critical to, to outline as, as someone who's worked in other districts, I think you can get complacent with, with the training, and you just sort of push a button and do a drill and go through the motions, go through the paces, but that's not what Waterbury does. It's very proactive and thoughtful. The drills are, are mixed up and different things are thrown at. The administrators, and one of the things that John and myself do on a regular basis is outside of drills, as we come in, we'll just see what's happening. Have we stopped at the front door, do we ask to sign in, or we check at the buzzer? We have our ID cards, but we don't use them at first, let's see how it works in the entry protocol, and I think that's good. And we follow up and we give the reports back to the schools on how they did, what we can do to improve. So it's a, an ever-evolving and, and working process, as I think is important. We've put these protocols in place with all 32 schools, there's slight variations with each location, and with those levels of feedback, we revise and adjust as needed. And one of the things we've done recently is re-energize our security, district-wide security team and meet more on a regular basis with that. But that includes not just John and myself, but we've proactively and intentionally involved the IT department, facilities, health department, the administrators' union, the teachers' union, to vote, to be a push and a pull, to give information that we're focused on, but to hear back from them, what are they concerned about, what issues are they facing, so that we can adjust and revise. Our investments in safety, I mentioned the security grants earlier. We have put in a comprehensive security system through that Alliance and State Security Grant funding. I can tell you, phase four finally came through, and we were the top recipient across the state, based on our application in our award. So over that, the life of the security, the four rounds, as well as other funding through Alliance and school construction, there are $4 million dedicated directly to security that Waterbury's provided some match for, which is essentially 76, 78 percent funded by the state. That's given us the camera systems, over 850 cameras throughout the district, all the switches and radios and so forth. We've actually upgraded some radios recently, working with the police department, finding where some dead spots are, really making sure we focus on that. And, and most recently, and this will be coming in phase three and phase four, as we continue to spend that money in that collaboration, working together with the police department, we're working to flip over on the platform, which is what's called the milestone platform, which is what the police department is going on. So we can grant access to cameras in emergency situations, so the police can look at them on their phone and a laptop, at their 911 and so forth, based upon our control, giving them the view access. So if there is an emergency, literally the first responders, both police and fire, coming to the scene can see what they're coming to. And then they can set up an incident command standpoint where we can assist, but ultimately in those situations, they'll step back, but they can have access granted through us with the technology. Through our work with our facilities department and IT and that collaboration, we're sharing building plans as well. So you're not just coming into the building, now you've got a video, you can pull up the plans, you can put together incident command, know where we're coming in from the north and the south, what room, and so forth, with our upgrade of our phone system, which should be coming in this next year. That will also help isolate where maybe a 911 call is coming from, not just West Side Middle School, and you've got to search the whole school to find the place, but specifically within the school can spot it. So those advancements of technology and being thoughtful about it and layering it on top of the foundation that exists and building from it is, is what we're, what we're really working on right now. And that, that is our plan for 2019 and beyond. It's that relaunch of the security committee, we've had a couple of meetings as we finished up this year. We're going to do some work over the summer and some more training with the police department and fire department on incident command type of protocols and responses, and then upgrade our training to our administrators and staffs who start the new year and the adjustments or tweaks we have to make, so everyone is on the same page going into the 19, 20 school year. With respect to the grants, I would just say, as someone who's written those and done those before, you know, those- those before, you know, those aren't awarded by accident. Those are awarded because you followed all of the rules that the state puts in place of having your district-wide security plans, your school's security plans, and checking off all the boxes. Not all districts do that, believe it or not. And also having the commitment of a match. With tougher financial times, more districts backed away in Phase Three and Phase Four because they didn't want to do the match anymore, couldn't afford it. You and the mayor and John have recognized the need to remain steadfast in that commitment. As you've heard me say in the IT scenario, the lifecycle of some of these devices is not as long as you'd like it to be. So some of the cameras, while great, you know, don't last for 100 years, don't last for 10 years. So you have to have a plan to recycle these and work with them, and that's one of the things we're working closely with Will and with Chris and the facilities team to make sure what we're putting in place, we can stagger and have a replacement plan, and have some additional attic stock, if you will, that we can fill it. And the milestone platform is much more nimble than our current system, so we could flip over on servers in an emergency and be able to get back up and running very, very quickly, as opposed to waiting to purchase some additional technology. So the good news is, I think we're in a good place, with John coming back and kind of re-energized people's focus. I hope with some of the experience that I brought, I was able to help and revise a few things and disteak a few things, and frankly, with the great collaboration with the police chief, fire chief, and all those partners, it's been very easy. We were literally at the table with their RFP for their camera system process, we were at the table for their planning with their IT folks and our IT folks, and again, that doesn't happen everywhere. And to have that collaboration, they were making the decision, it was their contract, but to be involved in it and make sure we were doing it the way that we could benefit from them and they could benefit from us, I think can only serve us well going forward. So we'll continue to have that committee working and share our information, take in information from our stakeholders, and adjust our plans going forward. So we've got another week to go, but we've had some excitement through the year, but overall, a safe and healthy year, and one that we feel like we've been able to respond very quickly as a team to the security issues as they've come up. So I'd like to take any questions.
Got a question? Commissioner?
Just a quick clarity, now that Rob Maxwell has moved on, who's your point person on the police side that you're working with, John?
I'm working with Captain De Silva and Sergeant Pepe Resnick.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Thank you, Madam President. Do we have a priority list per school? The reason why I'm asking, let me explain why I'm asking, was at Waterbury Career Academy, so kind of jog my memory of some things I had mentioned that were needed, and I understand that we have priorities, but, for example, Waterbury Career, I believe they requested a camera that, outside, that looked out towards Berkeley Avenue, because there was an incident with some students, you know, gang-related, and the students walk out, and they were not beat up, but were attacked. So I know there was a request in for that, for a camera. Then they noticed, and I think I got this from the parent liaison, they're noticing that from Berkeley Avenue, and Berkeley Avenue is where we had that tragic accident, okay? But the entrance from Berkeley Avenue, we have some people cutting through the parking lot to go on the other side, to go onto, I think it's Birch Street. So perhaps speed bumps might be a solution to that. And the safety issue there is that our kids and our staff, you know, they'll park their vehicle, and then they're walking into the school, but yet we have this traffic that's coming, speeding through, and there's no way to slow that traffic down. So my question is, do we have, per school, a priority list, and how are we looking at that and looking to solve those issues related to safety?
Well, the short answer is yes. The long answer is, you know, every school has their priority list. So it's a matter of looking at that as a micro and a macro level. So we try to do, and we just actually sent out our annual memo this week to schools as they finish up, because schools have their own safety committees that they focus on, and that's another piece of information that comes back to us. One of the things we specifically asked was that point, what are some of the areas you've identified, to make sure we're getting it on the list and on our radar. We try to then incorporate that into our capital planning, our security grant planning, or other budget facilities planning. Again, this is one of those areas where security is kind of often at silo, if they get a grant, they get a grant, and whatnot. Rolling that into facilities and IT and the whole operations team was a big step in making sure we're all looking at that and sharing the dollars we have. We're getting that information back from schools, they care about, John does track this as he goes and does these drills, and what do they identify, and the police raise the issues, like the specific one you mentioned, the career, those are things we take back and will add it to our list. With the new cameras, the IP cameras versus the old analog cameras are a little bit more like computers, so essentially wherever you have a drop, you can plug it in. So the beauties of the newer system that we'll be installing is that you can be set up over here, and looking at us, for example. But over time, you realize that this isn't really the problem, that, you know, Maria says that her real issue was over there. Well, then we could just move the drop, boom, and the camera's over there. So if it's, we need to focus on another location within the building, we can use some of the existing cameras and move them around or add cameras. So those are, we're going to upgrade the technology, so we have a little more flexibility, but also isolating where those additional needs are, and then we have to find the money.
Okay, so, back to my original question then. What happens, these two items were identified, so what happens to prioritize? I understand you have the safety committee, et cetera. So now, what happens with that? I mean, it leaves the school, safety committee goes to Mr. Herman, and then what? What happens after that?
We look for what funding we have available.
Is there feedback given to the school that, yes, we are looking into this?
Yeah, we communicate back to the school what we're working on and what we can try to get, and we try to do what we can as best we can with what we have to accommodate their issue. If it means adding, that's a matter of what money can we assign to it. So in the example of, for us at this point, with the Phase Four funding, the good news is, over 20 schools were funded. The bad news is, they didn't include the high schools. Now, where the state draws that line is an interesting debate to have, but, so what's going to happen for us is, good news, we'll be able to upgrade some schools, frankly, that don't have cameras, and have very old cameras, so that's a priority. And then we will then try to leverage other funding that we can find, or other grants we might want to go after, to try to supplement Career and some of the other schools that weren't included. Career was able to get most of their security through the construction project.
Got it.
Versus the grants. But that was now past life of those cameras. That's like six, seven years ago, eight years ago. So, you know, again, we need that, and this goes to everything with technology, we need that sustainable lifecycle plan to make sure it's not a one-time investment, that gets us going, but we've got to go back to Career, and back to Kennedy, and back to West Side and so forth, and make sure we have the lifecycle. So as part of the planning, we're also doing that lifecycle planning, we, between, in the facilities, Martin Raj and Will and the IT department, we have an inventory of all the cameras, all the devices, what's the age, what's the life expectancy, what's the cost for replacement, and then we factor that in as we try to juggle the dollars.
All right. So I guess my main concern is to just make sure that the schools are given an update as far as, you know, where things stand with their requesting.
Yeah, and that's part of the committee, too. We recognize that communication is one of the things we talked about, is something we want to do a better job at. So if we push it back out through the committee, send out those minutes, send out those updates, using the unions and principals on the team, we hope to do a better job of that.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And Lou is on the committee.
Commissioner Sweeney?
I don't see the hospitals in our plan. Do we interact with them about our security plan, and heaven forbid what should happen if there's ever a major incident?
Yep, that's a great point, and they have been, they were invited to re-stock this Security Committee, and we're also now creating essentially little subcommittees, an incident command group, and the police and fire are really taking a lead on that, and we're a partner in that, but that does in fact involve the 911 and the first responders, and we're looking at doing, working our way up to some more aggressive training, but starting with maybe a tabletop exercise. What is, you know, incident command situation? How do we deal with the police response, the fire response, the emergency response? What's the hospital's role? What's the communication role? How do we leverage our technology? Let parents know? Where do parents go? All those things that we've learned and seen from other places, and John just went to some training a month ago, I'm going next month, you know, these are things that you see, unfortunately, you've seen too often in some of these other events, but if something happens at a parkland, everybody comes to park. Right? So how are you managing that crowd? How are you managing the communication? How are you letting the first responders do their job? And so those are things we need to hear from police and fire and the hospitals on, what can they take, what will we triage on scene, what are we moving off, and so forth. So those are things we want to talk through as a committee and learn more about, but absolutely, we reached out to them, and they came, and again, John has built those relationships over years, Chief Magnolo, you know, what I found here in Waterbury is, they don't send the fourth-in-command, the chief shows up. So there's no question of the dedication and the point people that can make, there's decision-makers at the table, which is important.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you for all your hard work. We feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
And stay healthy, John.
I am.
Next is number 10, informational, the summer school schedule. Anybody have a question about it? Okay, 11, the monthly, the April monthly expenditure report. Again, any questions for Doreen? Melissa Baldwin is up for quite a few. Is she in the house?
Madam President, before Melissa starts, I'm going to suggest that at 7:45, we recess this meeting and go to the budget.
Yes. Remind me, yep, thanks.
No, but I'm just going to tell you, we're going to interrupt you at 7:45.
Unless you're done.
I'll be done.
You better, or we're not going to approve it.
It won't be me.
Can I do it?
All right, number 12, thank you. Good evening, Melissa.
Good evening. How are you?
Elaine.
Elaine Zabrowski, Special Education Department.
Number 12.
We're requesting approval of nine contracts for out-of-district placements for students with disabilities with Attlebrook, Boys and Girls Village, at the Charles F. Hayden School, Capital Regional Education Council, Connecticut Holdings, also known as Solterra, CJR, Hope Academy, St. Joseph's at the Jengra Center, Children's Center of Hamden, and Wheeler Clinic. You have all of the documents. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Melissa? Number 13.
We're requesting approval of three contract amendments for out-of-district placements for students with disabilities with CREC, Capital Regional Educational Council, Specialized Education of Connecticut, High Roads, and St. Vincent's Special Needs Center.
Any questions? Okay, number 14.
We are requesting approval of a contract between the City of Waterbury and Educational Based Services, EBS, for registered behavior technician services.
That's 14?
I'm sorry. We're requesting approval of student intern affiliation agreement with University of Connecticut School of Social Work for social work student internships.
Any questions? Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. We've had this program in the past, correct?
Correct.
I just have a curious to know that, did any of the interns that came through Waterbury then subsequently get hired in Waterbury, which I think we had hoped for, because I know we're a shortage area?
We have in years past. We have, not this school year, but in years past, we have had some interns come on board. Mainly ones that are going, they have to get their master's degree, so it depends if they're going through a master's program or a bachelor's program.
Right, because we're still looking for the conduit there.
Right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, number 15.
We're requesting approval of an agreement with CW Resources to provide transition services to students with disabilities. This is a previous contract, and we've been working with them for a number of years.
What age level is this?
16 to 21.
That's a 16 to 21, okay. And that's different than what Dr. Ruffin talked about earlier?
It is. These are students that are currently in high school or right after, and they only do this one or two days a week, and it provides them with work experience, supported.
Okay. Any questions? Number 16.
We are requesting approval of a professional services agreement with EBS Healthcare to provide registered behavior technician services. This will replace our current Easter Seals program, our current Easter Seals contract.
Commissioner Watt?
So where are we with the contract that we entered into last year with the other company that didn't work out so good, from what I've been understanding?
We are going to write a letter to them, and I have not written the letter yet, so...
So that was a one-year contract or a multi-year contract?
It was a multi-year contract.
And did it have performance requirements in it for the first year?
It did.
And do we have, if we're unhappy, and maybe?
We do.
So what's the timeframe for the communication of that sense? Is it through June 30th?
Elaine and I have already put together a letter, and it's gone to legal, and we're waiting for their response.
So my question remains, what's the timeframe to give them adequate notification if we want to terminate or seek, you know, some type of renegotiation of the contract? I don't want it get, and this is not to get legal, I don't want it to get caught up in a legal review where we missed the timeframe or the window of notification that we're unhappy.
I don't know of a window in the contract for a certain number of days' notice.
Maybe we should check to make sure there isn't one.
I just, you know...
So there isn't one, or you're just not sure?
There is not one in the contract. But these RBTs are not, these RBTs are replacing Easter Seals program.
No, I know that, but it's a segue for me to ask the question about the other problem, because both companies were providing them, from my understanding, correct?
Easter Seals and Constellation, correct.
Correct. And so this is replacing Easter Seals, and there's issues with Constellation?
Correct.
That we should look at in a holistic approach?
Right.
That's my question. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, any other questions? Okay, next one.
We are requesting approval of a professional services agreement with Connecticut Behavioral Health to provide registered behavior technician services. This is a backup for our EBS Healthcare. We felt that with the number of registered behavior technicians we are going to be utilizing, we would like to make sure that we have the appropriate amount of staff for our students.
If I remember correctly, building on the inquiry from Commissioner Watt, these were going to be, are we were using our own in-house personnel?
We are, we continue to use our own in-house personnel.
And these are only used for vacancies?
Correct. And also to replace Easter Seals.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, number 19.
We're requesting approval of a professional services agreement with Rob Davis Summit Support Services to provide board-certified behavior analyst services. This went out through RFP as well.
Okay. All right, any questions? Okay, thank you.
There's one more, 18.
I thought we did that, but anyway, go ahead.
You're right. Request approval of a professional services agreement with EBS Healthcare to provide board-certified behavior analysis services. We currently have three BCBAs in district, and this will, we will continue to have three in district.
And you are conducting a special ed audit, correct? When do you expect that to be? Not you, but I mean, we're having one. When do we expect?
Next year, next year. This year, it was too close to the end of the school year to be effective.
Okay.
So with Dr. Ruffin, we were going to start it at the beginning of next school year.
Okay. Okay. I'll look forward to that, okay?
Me, too.
Any other questions? Okay, we did number 20.
That's it?
You're done, yep. 21, Dr. Ruffin. Appointment to the Greater Waterbury Cable Council.
At this time, the appointee will not be announced until near September.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a lot of elevators. I think this will be quick.
I don't think this is going to be quick. I have a lot of questions.
Okay. All right. Okay. Sorry, we're going to have to go into our special meeting, and then we'll, thank you.
Five minutes, how about use of school facilities?
All right.
I'll sit here to support Doreen.
Those will be fast, we won't worry about that. Okay. All right, can I have a motion to?
I'll move that we recess the workshop.
Second.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries, thank you. We'll go into our special meeting. You have four minutes? Okay, good, I'm going to stand up then.
There you go.
Take a break.
Yeah.
Take a break.
Madam Clerk, the roll call.
Commissioner Awad.
Here.
Vice President Harvey.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Fadano.
President.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno. Commissioner Stango.
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney.
Here.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone. Commissioner Tom Vanstone.
Present.
President Brown.
Okay, good evening. Commissioner Awad.
Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on Finance, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the Department of Education's 2019-2020 operating budget, totaling $177,932,468, of which $158,375,000 appropriated by the Board of Alderman, $15,932,468 of Alliance Year 8, $450,000 from the 2016-17 surplus, $1 million from the 2015-16 surplus, $1 million from the 2014-15 surplus, $675,000 of the contingency surplus, and $500,000 of the city non-lapsing contingency. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Commissioner Awad.
So, during the light of last night's, actually Monday night's budget, there is an additional, looks like $6 million, coming to the district this year, and then an additional, I believe it's $13 million in the next year. Let's not worry about two years, let's worry about this current school, not the current school, the coming school year, where we've got the additional $6 million. There is no anticipation that there'll be any reduction in the general fund allocation, because the Board of Alderman voted on it tonight, correct?
Correct.
So, that additional $6 million plus will fund the gap that we came in with, as well as provide us opportunities to look at other areas to expend what will be remaining dollars at this point.
That is correct. So, the city's contribution to the Department of Education is still at $158,375, and the additional 6-point-something million would go to the Alliance side of ECS. That will come to the district.
Okay, and those funds will offset our deficit?
So, it'll offset the 1.5 million deficit that we came in with.
As well as provide us some additional dollars to look at other opportunities during this coming school year.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Could I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Could I have a motion?
Motion to return to the regular order of business to the workshop.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Clark. Number 22.
Yes, the next few here deal with elevator projects, and essentially, just take them all together. Basically, previously, the Board of Alderman had approved these elevator projects at a certain amount. They have now adjusted and added to that amount as far as the capital budget to fund this. So, what these essentially are doing is allowing for, with your approval, this allows us to make the formal state application and get in the queue to actually apply for these as elevator projects under the state rules. So, this would be Bunker Hill and Washington. And just looking into the research, I think what happened is, they made a certain projection of what they expected the elevators might have cost. But then, when they got down to actually moving forward, it became pretty clear that that was a low number. So, we, the facilities department worked with some consultants and actually revised and updated those numbers, working with Michael Blank and Sarah on the city side, understanding that we had a gap between what had previously been approved, and, you know, we were concerned about going forward with asking for an elevator project that we'd then have to turn around and ask for a change order, wouldn't be able to afford, and, you know, having a fourth-floor building with an elevator that stops at 2 and 1/2 would not work so well. So, we adjusted the numbers, and it has been approved on the city side as far as the capital money and the match being there. So, this would get us to that process of getting in the queue, and this probably then goes through a whole exercise and would be something down the road next year or so. We have projects that have been approved in the past. We're hoping to get rolling this summer with four elevators, so these would be another two that would come likely next year. But this gets us in the queue.
Commissioner Awad.
I did. Prior to the recess, I had remarked that I had a number of questions about this, but during the interim, you and I were able to clear up some of my concerns. So, once this makes it out of the queue and onto the table, then we'll talk more.
We'll be back.
But I appreciate your time, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Where are we with the elevators? I forget. So, how many more schools after these two? Because I know Chase is going to be done, and we did hope, Phil...
Yeah, we've got four, and hopefully...
Kingsbury, I think is on the list.
Kingsbury's on the list. And, you know, we're going through the scheduling of that right now to see how many we can get done this summer, or at least get rolling. There's a bunch of masonry work, there's issues with remediation and so forth. We've got to actually wait till the kids get out and whatnot. But they will all hopefully get rolling, and we talked about, do we stage them and do two and two and that sort of thing? But thankfully, the winning bidder was, said that they can get rolling on all four. So, we're now working with our facilities team to see how we can work it. There's some issues with respect to, you know, making sure we hit all the bells and whistles of the requirements and bidding and local workforce.
Including the good job support.
Exactly. So, those are some things that Commissioner Awad is working with our team on. But ideally, we'll get rolling on that masonry work. And that's something that, depending on what work is happening when, we may be able to continue through the school year and work around the school. Most of these are, as you know, on the outside of the building, so they're kind of strategically located. But then, we get these two going, and we're then in really good shape. And I think at that point, we'd be looking at more or less elevator upgrade jobs as opposed to elevator jobs to be looking at in some roof projects in the out-years in our five-year plan. But these two would really finish up the main work that needs to be done where there isn't anything.
So, how much did the city end up allocating?
For the other four or for these?
For these.
These, this was 1.7.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Ruffin wanted to revisit number 21 for a minute.
Yes, and I apologize, in number 21, I said that that would hold through September, but I really need to appoint or reappoint someone who's currently serving on the committee. So, number 21 is an appointee of Nancy Vaughn to continue in the current position that she has as the Greater Waterbury Cable Council member.
Thank you. I think she's been there for quite a while.
Yes, she has.
As our representative, okay? Thank you. Now, we'll go back to 28. Use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. Any questions?
I have one question about the outside use for the basketball tournament. Are we waiving the $4,000 fee? Because those are for-profit tournaments. While they're run by nonprofit entities, they're for-profit. I think it needs to be re-looked at.
Say that again, they're nonprofits, but they're making a profit?
They're nonprofit entities running for-profit events.
So, the money goes to their nonprofit?
Yeah, and it's, there's significant dollars that are made at those tournaments. And while we may not want to bill them the whole $4,000, I think we should at least look at recouping some of the costs that go into covering the janitorial services for two days on the weekends, where we're paying overtime.
How does a nonprofit create a profit center? Is this a fundraiser in reality, or?
They charge admission, and they charge entry fees for the tournament. And it goes into their nonprofit coffers. They also charge the basketball players to play on those teams. So, it really is a very interesting setup.
Mr. Clark, could you look into that?
I certainly could look into that. I think, you know, these are sort of following the pattern of history in large part, and I would agree with Commissioner Awad. It certainly may be time for a look. I think the other piece of the puzzle here is, for the larger spectrum, regardless of what comes in, it goes to the city.
Correct.
Which is another element of the, so, we could be the bad guys all we want, but not necessarily getting the benefits of our vigor.
This all goes into the general fund?
By the way it's currently set up, by the statute, by the ordinances here, that's how it goes. So, no question, there's an expense associated with it. So, that's something we could look at. I've talked to Ms. McCaslin about the history of some of the things we've done here and the protocols. You know, the good news is, we certainly get the insurance, and she's very much a stickler on that. But from the fee structure and the waiving piece, I think that's something we could certainly look at, and I could report back on.
I mean, one of my considerations would be, is it serving the Waterbury kids, even though they have to pay a fee?
These are all out-of-state and out-of-town teams that come in to participate.
Oh, it's out-of-state, no, okay.
All right.
These aren't school-age.
These are AAU teams.
Yeah, they're amateur athletes.
Correct. Oh, oh, okay. We might want to look at that.
We'll do.
So, look at the ordinance, so we get the money back.
That would be beneficial.
You're in charge of that.
I only got four months left, but I'll do it.
All right, number 30, superintendent's update to the board. All right. And there's no executive session. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.